We'd like to welcome everyone to the May 25th meeting of the Newborn Board of Alderman at this time of prayer given by Alderman Jeffrey Odom.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us break. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day, another opportunity to gather together and do your will of the city. We ask that you lead, guide, and direct our conversation, our words, and our discussion in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Jordan, please introduce the flagrant.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we'll start with Roe.
Alderman Beagle. Alderman Woman Harris.
Present.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey. Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
First item is the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second and zero discussion. Seeing in all favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Mr. Hughes, let's go to item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor Alderman. First item on the agenda is to conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance and amending the table of permissible uses under Appendix A article 10 section 15 dash 146 of the land use ordinance. The board has asked to conduct a public hearing on this amendment to the land use ordinance with respect to the C dash three commercial zoning district. The proposed amendment will allow elementary and secondary schools as a permissible use. After receiving public input, the board has asked to consider adopting an ordinance amending section 15 dash 46 to allow such use. Memo from the Director of Building Services attached, and we're having to answer any questions.
Okay. As far as any questions before we get to the public hearing. Mr. Rosary, if you'd like to make any comments, please do.
No, just about warehouse, care of work, submit this question as amendment to our table of permissible uses. So again, the consideration here is to allow elementary and secondary schools in the C three commercial zoning district. Our table of permissible uses in section 15, 146, establishes all the uses they have allowed in our zoning districts, but they're allowed by right, which would be denoted by a Z, but they're allowed by a use of special use permit because you need a board of adjustments, that's denoted with an S, or not allowed at all, in which the call would be zero. So the request here, the request here tonight is to allow elementary schools and secondary schools as used by right in our commercial district, which are not allowed right now. The request was heard by the planning zoning board. The planning zoning board recommended approval, but their recommendation to the Board of Alderman is to make it a special use permit, so essentially put an S in the table of permissible uses to allow those types of uses in the commercial district, to be, to have to go through the board of adjustments and get a special use permit, but still allow the use of either. So that's the recommendation of the planning zoning board. I know the applicant is here, would like to make small presentations for it before you may go to your other.
Then we'll do the four.
Before, yes.
Mr. Parsons.
Good evening, Mayor Outlaw, members of the board. Attorney Murphy, project manager, with McKimmin Creed, I'm assisting Mr. Cliff Parsons, attorney with Warren Smith on this request. Request before you receive any consideration is the tax amendment to allow elementary and secondary school use by right in the C three zoning district. Justification for this request was provided in our application. I'd like to just go over a couple of points. Elementary and secondary school uses are compatible uses to uses that are currently permitted in the C three zoning district. The C three zoning commercial district properties generally located on the city's major radial roads, therefore the existing infrastructure, transportation, and utility networks are typically in place to support school type use. The permitted uses in the C three zoning district currently allow for education located within any existing or new structure per 5.320. In addition to various higher intensity commercial land uses, residential land uses such as single family, multifamily are also allowed by right in the C three district. And therefore allowing elementary and secondary school uses in the C three district will provide the necessary framework to encourage development patterns that increase the potential for citizens to access educational facilities within close proximity to their residence and will therefore assist in creating a walkable community. It is therefore that we believe granting this tax amendment will assist in allowing development that will improve the New Bern community. Economy, environment, by utilizing the existing infrastructure and resources efficiently. Well, Cliff and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have. We appreciate your consideration.
Okay, is there any questions at this time? At this time, I'm going to open a public hearing. Anybody like to come forward and ask questions, make comments, item number eight. You're more welcome to do that at this time.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Travis Oakley from here in New Bern and the board six, I was in the P and Z board. So we actually voted on this. I'm just kind of curious as to why we would need to change this and not just make it a special use designation like it's currently stated in the code. I think that was the biggest question when it came up before us. So that's where that decision came from, the recommendation for the P and Z. We're just kind of curious as to why, why we would change it now. This way you can kind of, you can kind of pick and choose, you know, when somebody asks for a special designation. That was my only comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward? Motion and second to close the public hearing is our discussion. Seeing in all favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, at the discussion carries.
I just have a couple of questions. I'm just trying to make sure I understand it. What we're asking for tonight is to amend the table of permissible uses. Currently, schools would be under C four, correct? Primary, secondary.
Yeah, it's a special use permit across the board for most zoning designations. Except for C five, C one, C two, C three in our industrial zoning district. So it's allowed by special use in residential districts, which has been very historic across the country, essentially to allow schools in residential districts. But the request right now is to allow it as a by right in our commercial district, which is not allowed right now whatsoever.
Correct. So the amendment is to take away the special use permit?
There is no special use permit also. Let me just.
I want to make sure that that's what I'm confused about.
Yep.
All right. So if you look at those, that was the point right now where it says C. That is the request the applicant to put, to allow by right. Z means by right in our table of permissible uses. Currently, there is nothing there. It's just like C one and C two. So that would mean the use is not allowed. So the use is not allowed right now in C three. There is nothing there. The request from the applicant was to make it a use allowed by right. The recommendation from the planning zoning board was to make it a special use permit application, so allow the use through the use of a special, through the issuance of a special use permit from the board of adjustments. So right now, there's nothing there and you can't put a school in C three. The request from the applicant is to allow it by right. The recommendation of the planning zoning board after hearing the testimony of the applicant was to, as Travis said, was to make it a special use permit use.
So that's my question. So a special use permit is basically an additional layer of permitting or of planning, I guess, around that. My concern is, you know, it is going to be residential use out there, which I think is great, but of course, as you see in another neighborhood, you have traffic issues, you're going to have children playing, you're in a school area, I would think you would want a special use permit because then it will speak to, I believe, ingress issues, other things. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Can. Absolutely.
Okay. I understand that.
I think that I would like to make a motion that, and I don't know, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Davis, my motion wants to be that we adopt a resolution adding the special use permit. Can we do that or do we just reject what we're asking?
Your motion.
So my motion is that I'd like to make a motion that we adopted ordinance amending the table of permissible uses under Appendix A article X section 15, 1 dash 146 of the land use ordinance to include a special use permit.
In a C three district.
In a C three district.
Yes, sir. Very welcome.
Second. First and second is their discussion. Seeing in all favor of the discussion, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Beagle.
Alderman Beagle.
Yes.
Alderman Woman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number nine.
Mayor, the next item is to conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to annex a portion of tax ID eight dash two zero nine dash thirteen zero zero one. Warehouse has requested a portion of tax ID eight dash two zero nine dash thirteen zero zero one consisting of approximately 5.24 acres to be annexed into the city limits. The parcel is situated off US 70 near the West New Bern Development. After conducting the public hearing, the board has asked to consider adopting an ordinance to annex the property. Memo from Ms. Long that was attached.
Staff, do you have any comments before we go to the public hearing? Okay, at this time, if we're having questions before the public hearing. Seeing in all, we're going to go to a public hearing on item number nine, considering adopting an ordinance to annex a portion of tax parcel eight dash two zero nine dash one three zero zero one. See if anybody would like to come forward and make any comments. You're free to do it at this time.
Mayor, would you like to make a motion to close over here?
Second.
Motion and second to close the public hearing is their discussions. Seeing in all favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Question for, I guess, staff or either the applicant. What's the purpose of this street with this little parcel versus doing the whole area including at one time, other than not paying taxes? Probably taxes, I would assume would be one.
I quit partial for tonight. That's all that's been platted at this point. The development agreement warehouse entered into with the city a few years ago requires us to apply within 30 days of a platted portion to apply to the annexation. That is all that's needed right now to get access to that parcel and just give the developer a bit more flexibility in planning the other phase of development.
And the initial setting will be what?
It's what's there now, which is the C, I believe it's a C three as well. So, yeah.
To your question, Alderman Odom, I'm looking at over and not having a survey, I thought maybe it was if you lay infrastructure, water, sewer, and electrical, you pretty much more have more of a roadmap that that's probably going to be at some point a possible dedicated street with street improvements. And so if you have that in place with this agreement tonight, you won't have to live a sewer line five feet over or something. Is that kind of what was going on?
That is part of it. The other part is we've annexed West New Bern Parkway there and we needed to connect this. We didn't want this to be just sort of a satellite zoning, for lack of a, I would like better term, it wouldn't be satellite zoning if it wasn't contiguous. And so it made more sense to do it this way. But yeah, that's where the utilities and infrastructure will be ultimately.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. There's no more questions. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance to annex a portion of tax parcel eight two zero nine one three zero zero one.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing in all, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Woman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Beagle.
Yes.
Motion carries. Discussion item number 10.
Mayor, the next item is the discussion of Juneteenth celebration request for services. As a follow-up to the request presented at the board's May 11th meeting, organizers of Juneteenth are seeking assistance with street closures. Data told me they were not requesting bus transportation and they are requesting public safety. The total cost of these services is estimated to be $2,478. The board has asked review of the request and render a direction. Staff, as reminded, the board voted in the previous meeting to authorize the event to use the city's motor stage. And Talina, Talina Massey is here.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. We have some updates for you, just a little bit. And going through that cost right now, you can exceed the bus transportation. We have confirmed dog carts, so we will not be moving that as well, so that's less cost that we have on that. We have additional updates as to the participation that we have, I mean, since last time, I know we had a plethora of stuff that I told you about, but lo and behold, we've had so much more support since, since then. And I am happy to announce to everyone, with the approval of the street closures, I received confirmation this morning that the secondary aircraft wing ceremonial band will be marching with us in the Juneteenth parade this year. So we are super excited to have them join us. And as you can see with the breakdown, we were able to significantly cut what we were asking for. We're only really coming here with 10% of what we originally came and asked for. So as you guys talked to us, we were able to go back, we were able to get partnership, partnerships, raise funding. We talked about fireworks before, so we were able to raise a good amount of funding towards that. And again, tonight, we are coming with the ask of the city, again, partnering with us and a lot of the hard work that we've done just in between the times I've come here before to help us with the services if possible. And again, revisit your consideration of the fireworks, especially in lieu of us being able to raise at least half of the amount that we were originally asking for. I know you, you had mentioned before that you guys write checks for things, you help with services and if at all possible, I don't know if there's a way that we could partner with the city on the fireworks and maybe you guys have write us a check for fireworks, maybe we write you a check for partnership as far as purchasing the fireworks. But we are really hoping that you will reconsider that, have that for our children, see the amount of faith leaders and community leaders and business leaders that have come together on these meetings to bring their resources and pool them in a very short amount of time, considering we didn't even know if we could do this at the beginning of the year. And we still have more signatures of support. We have a change of work petition that has over 100 signatures and is rising every day. The beautiful piece that Senator did. Just the way that the community is really coming together behind us to have 10 or more days of activities, that I've got people coming from New York and other people coming from Atlanta and from all over just to come for this event, this whole week of things that we have going on to see our beautiful city. So we are really asking that you reconsider and partner with us in the hard work that we are trying to do to ensure that this is a great festival for old and young and everything in between. Thank you, guys. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. As well.
Question for two.
Sure. And in talking with partnerships, I know that you guys typically partnered the Greater Duffield Resident Council and Doug Fest, and as known, they have not been able to have a celebration for two years with everything that's been going on. So just as a reassurance that we have tons of community buy-in, even from city sponsor events that you guys were typically done, that haven't been able to do at this time. So just the support, that's a.
Ms. Massey, I want to ask you a question. So at this point, what amount of funding are you actually asking us for on behalf of Juneteenth?
The services minus the bus transportation.
Right.
And again, partnership thing with half of the cost of the fireworks sometime. Yes, Mayor.
This was brought up at our TDA meeting last week, and I was just curious if they had reached out to you because we see, we'd like to, the TDA, work with you to promote this event because as tourists and people come into our community, we want the information, we want to put it on our website, we'd like to have a, you know, a tab there talking about events, you know, and what the significance of this and whatever. So I urge you, I know Melissa Riegel is the executive director of the TDA, if you could get in touch with her, and I'll touch base with her tomorrow and make sure she has the authority to give your contact information. But I think this is a great way to partnership. You talked about people coming from other places. Well, we've got influx on camp, that's a camp weekend where there's people in town who may want to, you know, participate in some way. And I think the more we can get the message out, the better it'd be for everybody. So I'd like to see us work together on that.
Will do. I hadn't heard from them, but I would love to partner with them. I will give them a call should I receive that information. Again, the biggest, I think, overall theme of this has been partnership, as we've seen how everyone comes together. We even got our law enforcement, police officers who agreed to walk side by side with some of our community members, us peacemakers, instead of having so much of a police presence, having our community policing on display with civilians walking side by side with our police officers throughout this event.
And one of those suggestions is that you take as many photographs as you can because we could use this, again, in the tourism realm for future years and that promoting it to show what kind of things we do here in New Bern, so the more photographs that you have, the more they can use. I will talk to Melissa about, we have a marketing firm, I don't know what their schedule is, if they could be around to take photographs, but I just think it adds to what we offer in the way of tourism in our community. So I think that'd be what it.
Indeed, we have definitely added photographer to the list of needs on our Juneteenth to-do list, but again, as much as we can receive donations and in-kind donations and sponsors, we will be able to have those types of quality things at this event to make sure that we can produce that content. But just really quickly about how the residents support this event.
Good afternoon, Mayor. My name is Carol Wellman, I'm registered for the Greater Duffield Resident Council, and I just want to assure you that the Greater Duffield Resident Council is on board with Juneteenth. We have partnership with them, and FAG are participating in this year's events. We have contacted every community and sub-community that Duffield area representatives will be participating, and I think it's going to be a great thing. It is going to be awesome.
Other questions you guys have? Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the city of New Bern share in with the cost of one half the cost of the fireworks, of $2,500 for the Juneteenth celebration. And services.
Second to that.
Second.
If you have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Seeing in all, let's have a roll call starting with, follow with it. Yes.
I just want to make sure because I want everybody to know I will vote no. I would support the services, I would support all of that. I can't support the fireworks because again, I just feel that those are items that if I'm funding for the new other things, it shouldn't be part, I mean, there's no way for us to do that without writing a check. And so I don't know how the mechanics of that can work. I don't feel comfortable with that. So I would be voting no on this. And when it comes back, I'm in total support of all these services we need to get them. I'm in total support. I'm sorry, I was late of what we did with closing the streets. I think this is an awesome event, and I believe that in the years to come, this will be a great first step in having major celebrations down, down the road in years to come that will bring people, I believe, from not only our county regions, but our state and across other states. I truly believe that. But I would not be in support of, hey, for the fireworks at this point.
Okay, I'm going to back up a little bit, think of Alderman Harris has come.
Yes, I just, for the fireworks, I just want to make it clear that there will be no check written to the professionals, which is the fiduciary agent of, the fiduciary agent for the Juneteenth coalition this year. It would be us writing a check to whoever the city uses after speaking with Foster, and you guys writing your check to whoever Foster does the fireworks with. I think based on the fact that we stand as a board of public, right, private partnership, that we came with $22,000 worth of expenses, whether it's in-kind services or donations, and that is nothing compared to what we do for other city events, that we came back and were able to reduce it significantly by 90%, down to $2,400. And we're asking in support for the fireworks because this is a community event, it's open to everybody, it's for the kids. Due to everything that we've had pandemic, this is a great show of celebration and unity, and it's $2,500, and we have a lot of support from the community and the business owners, and I think it would be a great way to show your support for diversity, equity, and inclusion in the city of New Bern.
Mayor, I have a question. Attorney Davis, for this event, since it is a, will be a city-wide celebration, is it where that I could take a portion of my special appropriation funding to do, to aid this event?
Yes, and I believe that the person policy requires that any contributions you might make of your award funds go to a nonprofit for a public purpose. If I'm going to check those boxes, then that would be an option. And Alderman Best, I would, I'd be willing to work towards that. That would be a different scenario of the map. We can, you know, I know you've gotten sponsors for some other parts of your events, as I've seen on the flyers, which I think is great. You know, maybe, I guess you need funding in all the places, but if the fireworks are the most important part of your event, maybe you need the sponsorships over there, try to waste the funds in a different way, but I'd be willing to help with some of my Alderman funds versus having city sponsors. So I don't think that, that opens us up to all neighborhoods wanting to do fireworks for special events.
I will take that as always.
I'm almost willing to, you know, have like.
Okay, so right now we have a motion and a second. Well, again, let's go through some discussion. Get right in.
Yeah, I too have some concerns about the city writing a check for the fireworks. I also will be voting no against this, and it's basically because of the check that we would have to write for the fireworks.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Do you want to make your motion? I'm going to amend my motion.
Withdrawal your motion and let's start.
That's fine, too.
That's fine, too.
And you can draw your second.
I withdraw my second. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the city of New Bern, in requests for services and cost of fire, one half the cost of fireworks, that funding will be used from our own special appropriation funding.
I don't think you need to make a motion. You don't, you don't, the only thing you need to make a motion for is the city's services. But it'll have to work on our own. I mean, I commit, I, I get an update, I think I, I think I.
Isn't our special appropriation city fund, city money?
Understand, but it's in our Alderman fund.
It's still city, it's still city money.
Not federally, we don't have, we don't have to move, but that's our discretionary funds as long as we follow the guidelines, it's out of our discretion. We don't, I don't need your approval to spend money.
I made my motion and I retract the use of city funding. Second for services.
Okay, we have motion and second. Further discussion?
Ms. Clark, will you read back the motion? Just to make sure.
Well, after she's retracted it, I've got it down as just a motion to provide the services requested. And those services are?
Street closure, public and public safety, I believe.
Street closures, a one second. At around $2,478.
Correct.
Okay. So a roll call starting with Alderman Beagle.
Alderman Beagle.
Yes.
Alderman Woman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Oden?
Yes. Motion carries. I have number 11.
Anyway, that time is an update from the city attorney on the 2021 elections.
Mayor, members of the board, at our last meeting, we prepared us to reach out to legislature and other resources to bring you the latest on a resolution to our upcoming election problem. And here is the latest as of 5 o'clock. There is a Senate bill 722 pending before the legislature. Been there for a week now, exactly. They are working on various minor revisions to it. I'm allowed to say that folks are optimistic that it will be adopted ultimately. And what that bill will do is give every city like New Bern that votes by wards that believes it will have to redistrict to balance those wards, the opportunity to have a public hearing and continue, or delay the election, I should say, until March of 2022, with a runoff, if any, to be held in April or May of 2022. At the moment, that is our only viable option. There are some bills out there, as you know, that we discussed at our last meeting. I said that option. There is a possibility in a crisis moment that we might be able to have New Bern added onto those bills to give us some resolution versus none. But the more folks I've spoken with and the more I've had time to reflect on this, Senate Bill 722 is really the solution that the entire state needs. This is a problem and it has to have a statutory solution. Otherwise, cities like New Bern, and we are not alone at all, are going to have a considerable legal problem with wards that are not balanced by population or by race. So that is the latest. And then, I've heard, I've heard, I am also optimistic that it will happen. Everyone is aware that, was it late July, is the time, deadline to file, to run for office. And just to repeat for the public, the issue is that if you want to run for office, you have to reside in the ward that you are running for. At the same time, we know that you're going to have to redraw the lines of each ward that may send you out of the ward that you thought you were going to run in. So therefore, people don't know if they are qualified to run for office because we don't have the final lines on the wards. We also know and are quite confident that given the number of housing starts in several of our wards, we are considerably unbalanced. So we're not close. We're not by a point or two. We're within 20 or 30 percentage points of being unbalanced. So my, my final recommendation to you is that, and I've spoken with staff, they have the resources and ability to do this. I would strongly consider starting in June, early July, the latest, to go ahead and start reflecting on and thinking through how these wards might look once you redraw them, using housing starts as your, as your, your guidepost for that. Housing starts are a good proxy for ultimate population because we take the citywide average population per house, extrapolate the population for those wards, and at the very least, you can start putting some, some broader lines around your vision for the wards. And then the numbers finally come out in late August, we can then start moving those lines around block by block to fine tune it to make sure we can fly. But that process can take some time. If I were you, I would not wait until the end of the summer to start thinking about it.
A couple of questions for you. Did I understand you correctly that fire will open in July or will not?
It will. That's, that's the law.
So it will open in July.
That's why I'm saying is if we don't have a statewide solution, the train is leaving. And we've got to be...
But we wouldn't have an election in October.
We would not have an election in October.
Even though...
We're supposed to.
Okay, try my best.
That's right. That's why I say I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied. The legislature has to do something because truly New Bern, dozens and dozens of cities, don't have a solution otherwise.
So now, this is to my fellow board members one last time. Okay. Is there any appetite on this board? Because we have a chance now to sign on to Trent Woods' bill. Riverbend has a bill to change our elections to an even year. We're going to have an election in the even year anyway. We're going to, it's going to be March of '22, it sounds like. Is there any appetite for us to move to an even year versus, versus the October on here? If so, we, we need to speak now, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm just going to ask it one more time so I can be on the record to say that I did ask this. Because I talked to many citizens, you know, and they ask about that. So I'm, I'm just curious as to the appetite of the board.
So let's open that up for discussion because if we do that, okay, we're still in election year '21, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And then that would add a big year to our current term, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So then in '22, when we actually have, have the election, we'll serve, we'll serve, what, two years and then, not three?
Three years, three and a half. Because when we have an election in March, right?
The new term.
The new term, yes.
Yeah, the new term, we only three years.
If this board would have five, that would have four.
Yes, ma'am. If, if, if you follow Senate Bill 722 and it all passes, the city will conduct an election in March. This board will decide when that new board is seated. And, and then that board will, will serve for three and a half years or so.
Wow.
It's going to change another.
The filing opens in July. How long will it stay open?
Well, it, it will. If nothing changes, the existing law is the existing law. That's, that's what I'm saying.
But if 722 passes...
If 722 passes, all that changes.
All that, there's no filing in July. That's what I mean.
Right, exactly. Yeah. Filing will be later, later in the fall. Yeah, if 722 passes.
Okay, so if we, if we do nothing, and Friday opens up in July, we know for sure we're not having an election in October.
That's right. Along with other, along with dozens of other cities across the state, which is why I say Senate Bill 722 or one, or a, a bill just like it is, is going to have to pass.
Okay. I'm, I'm in support of, you know, giving everybody the right to be able to be in their park award, to be able to run, and to be able to vote. That's the right that we, you know, people have fought for. So I appreciate that. I think we need to allow the next board to figure out how the elections need to go moving forward. We have a lot going on. And I just think we need to just go ahead and, go ahead and take care of this election next year when we need to based on the state statute, hopefully it passes and move on from there.
Okay, any other discussion coming aside?
I asked y'all. Public, I've asked. I'm trying to save some money, so.
Okay, there's number one. Yes.
Would you know another question? If we, if we're having an election in 2022, regardless if we have it on a, oh, if we have it on a, up as the number one.
We can, instead of having, if we, if we attach onto the Trent Woods or the Riverbend bill, then we would go to a November election. And then going forward every four years. So if we wouldn't have an election in March, we would go, go to the November election. If not, if we go with this new Senate bill, we still have to have our election postponed. It's going to be a postponed election in March with a runoff. They're not sure April or May. So probably, in thinking about it, you probably want to seat your board July 1 because you don't want to bring the board and say that elections may or in the middle of a budget, adopt in a budget. So July 1 is the new year. So yet, this board would have had four and a half years, the next board would have three and a half years. It's reduced no matter how you look at it.
This is, this is kind of tricky. Because, so Scott, help me, please. So if we attach on to Trent Woods or Riverbend's bill right now, then that means we would have an election in November of this year?
November.
March of '22.
Yes, ma'am. And every four years there are.
And every four years there are. No, no, November. They're going to November. They're not, what they've decided, what Trent Woods and Riverbend has given up, they're, they usually get elected in November of an odd. So they've written a bill to say, no more odd year. We're going to November of an even year. So that's the bill in place. So regardless what happens with the Senate bill, they'll still go to election in November. They will not have an election in March. Only New Bern will. So therefore, we'll pay for all of the election stuff because we'll be the only ones having the election. I'm not sure how the county is going to handle that because I don't know what the primary is for the county and how all that works. That's where I'm really confused on that. So we'll, we'll pay, you know, we'll be the single one out there, as far as I know right now. Thank you all.
Okay, let's go to item number 12.
Do we need to make a motion?
Okay, mayor, the next item is to, to consider adopting a resolution approving classification paid plan for FY '22. Annually, the board adopts a classification paid plan for the upcoming fiscal year. The board is asked to consider this resolution approving the plan. If you have a memo in your packet from Ms. Hogue, grab the answer and questions you may have.
Okay. Support any questions?
Yes, I have a question. I know we talked about this in our budget workshop. So this means that with this, the 1.4 COLA is going to be across the board for all employees.
That is across the board for all employees that they qualify for. Those who are still serving with a six-month probation will not be, will not qualify for that.
So they will, any employee, just say if they did not get a merit increase, they will still get the COLA?
That's correct. With the exception of those that are serving that probation.
Mayor, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the classification paid plan for fiscal year 2021-22.
Second.
Motion and second, is there a discussion? Seeing as I have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Oden?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 13.
Mayor, the next item is to consider adopting ordinance amending the schedule of fees and charges. As part of the budget process, the board annually adopts and amends the schedule of fees and charges in part to identify in one place all fees charged by the city. Fees identified in the schedule are included in the revenue projections for FY '21-22 and will be effective July 1, 2021. A memo from Ms. Hogan is attached. There is also a redline copy in your packet. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, support any questions?
Question, Mayor. Foster, obviously, when we're looking at salary ranges and things like that, we're looking at comparable cities. When we get these redlined versions, where is the input coming from to justify or make a request for these changes?
So what I could say, definitely Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation, we're looking around at areas, cemeteries, which is mainly where we did our changes. And we look at comparable cities with, with, they had public cemeteries. And I'm sure the other departments they had changed did the same thing.
I just want to make sure that the public knows we're just not willy-nilly raising these fees. We're looking at data as driving these decisions.
That's correct.
Foster, I have a question on the, on the utilities and maybe you can answer. So because it was redlined, and that was the water sewer system development fees and connection fees and then water sewer rates. It says, C ordinance adopted 61218, C ordinance adopted 62315. So if there's a change in that, does that mean the rate has changed? But yet, it's saying C, something that was adopted. There's just, so I was confused on that.
Well, let Mr. Doos come up and answer that question.
But it was redlined, so that's what was confusing. I'm sorry, I would call it...
That's okay. Let me see the answer. Alderman Bingle, those were actually included in a, a separate section of the fees, of those notes. So we had those kind of varies in some other sections. We kind of combined all the fees with utilities with electric, water, wastewater into one section of the schedule of fees, trying to clean that up and make it a little bit easier to navigate for the customer. Nothing changed, we relocated it. And if you relocated it...
So there would have to be redlined, okay. Well, I saw it down in the bottom with white. I just was confused that if there was a price change or not.
Yeah, we just combined all the utility stuff in one subsection.
It'd be good, like, maybe if you put that in blue next time or something. So I'm sorry. Thank you, George.
If there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the schedule of fees and charges.
Second.
Motion and second, is there a discussion? Seeing as I have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Oden?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 14.
Next item, mayor, is to consider adopting the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2021-22. Previously, the city manager proposed a budget to the board on April 27. The budget workshop was held on May 4, and a public hearing was conducted on May 11, although no doubt in its were received. The budget ordinance for FY '21-22 reflects the changes approved by the board at the workshop, which are the addition of two positions in the fire department, a training and accreditation casting, and an office assistant, three. Fund balance will be appropriated to cover the cost of $143,310 to include positions. A memo from Ms. Hogan is attached. We're happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the budget.
I just, a comment, and I've spoken to Mary about this. So of course, we amended, we voted at last, at our workshop to amend the budget and to add those additional positions. And we've moved things around. We've got money in one budget, money in another line item, and we had to go into fund balance. And I agree that it never looks good to go into fund balance because when you add employees on there, you know, that's, you create that and you've gone forward with it, having to take care of that. And I know we've had that conversation many times. I was just curious why we didn't kind of massage the, the budget a little bit so we didn't have to go into fund balance. I, I believe, Mary, you want to come and talk to me about this. I believe that, and when I say massage some of the positions, we know that, you know, public works director has gone, he's got some interim in there. So there's maybe some funds there that would be saving. You know, with our interim city manager, and Mary clarified for me today, I did have a discussion with her, the pay for our city manager, is that under administration or under Parks and Rec?
It's going to remain under, for that position, that will remain under administration.
So, so...
It will be an empty position.
But his prior salary is then still in, so it's still in there. So we may not have to use fund balance because we're not spending it because we've taken the total, not an additional amount. We've taken additional, I mean, the, the total amount that was already in the budget.
Right. And it's, it's...
Is that correct?
Yes. Part of my position and duty review is we would not take that out of fund balance until we got to about June of next year. And for some reason, we were, we needed to do it at that point. We would. But for the most part, even when you appropriate money from fund balance, I actually don't rule it until I find out we need to do it because it really is not a great way to do business. Obviously, we'd like to, we'd like to live with, in this year's operating budget to pay for it with this year's operating revenue. That would be our goal. So I think it's, it's okay to keep it there as a placeholder, but it's not like on July 1, I'm going to take money out of fund balance and put it in the case department. It'll, it'll, it'll drive it to a space. Because I do believe we probably will find some savings in some other, in some other lines, including that one that you spoke about in Parks and Rec. So...
Yeah, I think you'll find a bunch of savings in, in the fire department itself.
Right. We, we all have things like that, yeah.
You'll settle them.
Same for the retirement and stuff. Because we had seen where Chief Boyd showed what we could work at, and that's why I was in favor of it. And I, I do hate to get into our fund balance if you don't have it. This got thrown in at the end of that meeting, and I just, you know, I just, I wasn't going to go in.
That's why you see the budget amendments happening at the end of the year.
I, I totally get that. I totally understand. I just wanted to make sure.
Where are we at with our fund balance? What's the presentation?
We're currently, we're, we're working on getting, we still have a little bit of money from Perkin-Florence that they're taking. You know, it's, when you look at it on the books, it appears to be coming out of our fund balance because that's what they have to do with it as far as the accounting goes. But, but in reality, once we get the rest of these Perkin-Florence monies, then we'll be about 50%. So we're doing, we're doing very good. We're doing very well. We're going to have a... So we're doing, we're doing very good. We're doing very well. We're going to have a, we're going to have another fifty here as well. So I'm, I'm, you know, there's possible fifty percent of the fund balance. And I think this is, and we've got a fairly conservative budget this year, so I think that's important.
In the standard that we did the first year we were, of thirty-five percent?
We have a fund balance policy that requires us, that the board has required to be twenty to thirty-five percent. Um, the state requires eight percent.
Thank you.
Mary, from a caper audit standpoint, that's going to happen before July, whenever you would make that determination on whether you have to pull the funds out of fund balance. How is that captured or discussed during the audit process?
Well, I mean, we have to, we have to end the year with a balanced budget. So if for some reason our revenues are lower than we expect in June, we do all this as a very medium where we just get ready to start this process. If our revenues are lower than we projected and our expenses are higher, so we've got a deficit. The balance will come from that fund balance. And the auditor, it's not really a discussion. It's just, it's just they just book the entry. We just book the entry and do it. It's, it's not that common that it happens. Um, but we've had a couple of years here with, anytime you've got an emergency or hurricane, it's, it, it will happen. They book themselves, um, any debtors that didn't like the Hurricane Florence fund. They book that through our general fund themselves. That doesn't go through my book, so the auditor can make that adjustment on their end.
And you're, you're fifty percent fund balance estimate. Is that included what's obligated for FEMA project?
That, that assumes that we collect the FEMA project money in total. We don't physically have it then. Or we can reset, we can, if, if we have good document, we have all the documentation order and we've submitted the claims to FEMA, then we can, then we can write it on, we can write again as a, as a, we can report as an account receivable and that counts. So we don't actually have to have that cash, but we have to have enough of a documentation. We can be far enough along with the process, but they will recognize it as receivable. They didn't the first year recognize twelve million dollars as a receivable. We had spent twelve million dollars. We hadn't really started even collecting, you know, submitting stuff that first year. It was just too soon.
So, so obviously the big question is Stanley White. So we've got five hundred thousand dollars in insurance proceeds. And then have we received any funding at all? Or is that reimbursable? Is that, um, what I'm trying to get is that dollar amount that we're going to spend on Stanley White capture is your fund balance?
What's, what's, what we're talking about capture is money that we have actually physically paid out. We've written checks for it and we are, have now, um, submitted that month, those, those claims to FEMA to be reimbursed and we're waiting to be reimbursed. So that's actually cash out. Stanley White, we haven't done that. Uh, but that could happen at this time next year. If we have spent a bunch of money and we have yet to receive it back, then we'll have that same kind of issue. I, I don't know that we'll really ever be out of that hole until we move, we'll further it a little. It's just the nature of where we are.
So we, we did a motion to set the funds aside. We still haven't received anything for what FEMA was paying out for Stanley White?
For Stanley White, that's correct. We're going through the environmental assessment process currently and, and of course, that is a reimbursable process where we have to pay for that upfront, submit that information to FEMA, then they cut us a check once we've spent the money.
So when we talk about our fund balance, that will come from our fund balance. I mean, I, I don't want to quote the number. Around eight million dollars, I think, is what we talked about. Um, and so that'll come from our general fund fund balance. That is about fifty percent. And then as the claims are submitted to FEMA and we get it back, then it'll reimburse, we'll reimburse ourselves. So that's kind of why it's nice to have that fund balance right now until we get some of these other projects taken care of.
So, so would you consider financing the Stanley White project, depending on what the interest rate is, and using those funds because it solves your own fund money? We can use that to pay off other high debt loans?
What I would, we, we can absolutely talk about that. We have a meeting. I think I had to look at what, what kind of projects we have coming up and what we, we have the appetite to finance and what we have the appetite to pay upfront for. And, and, um, I guess I, I don't know the condition. I'm not an engineer, but if it's, if it's, if it can be used as collateral, I, we can absolutely consider.
Well, obviously that building, you could finance it for a longer period than you could like a vehicle or something. That would typically.
And then we just got to make sure that how FEMA feels about reimbursing. I don't think they have an issue unless they really want it paid for before they'll reimburse it. So there may be some, some clips there, but I'm absolutely, I'm, I think we should consider all of it. I do think the interest rates are low and it's a good thing to look at borrowing right now.
It's funny that this discussion happens here tonight because we just talked about it today in about an hour and a half, two-hour FEMA meeting. Um, there's several projects that we are submitting for reimbursement now in preparing for the upcoming hurricane season. You know, we wanted to make sure that we had as much money in the general fund as we could have. Um, and I think we ended up saying this is going to be close. Is it, was it close to two million dollars we're going to be applying for? Or is it?
Four.
Four, right away?
Currently, we're about four million, uh, in the hole. Basically, we've, we've paid this money out. We're waiting for FEMA, but I expect that it will all be billed for. About two million I would expect to have in hand by June thirty. The other two million we will have submitted to FEMA, which then makes, we can, we can make the accounts receivable, um, and show, uh, show that the FEMA fund at, for change doesn't have a negative balance at the end of it. We've, we've spent out what we've brought in and, and so it keeps it whole. So then it doesn't roll over and affect our general fund.
I think I saw that there's supposed to be some money set aside by the government in regards to the readiness of the hurricane and, um, the infrastructure. If I find the link, I'll email it to you because I mean, obviously the resilience of the project that we're doing, there's funds available based on the work that Margaret's been doing and everyone's been doing work when he was here in regards to that, you know, it'd be great because again, we're coming up on hurricane season and we want all citizens to be prepared for it personally enough. So I would give that to you guys.
Good point. And also just to, um, we haven't had any issues with the state of North Carolina getting money to us. It's been FEMA getting the money to us. It's been some issues. And once that money, once the Stanley White Center is obligated, the funds go to the state and the state disperses the funds to us. So, um, I, I think that would be right in the large project, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, um.
The turnaround should be quick.
It, it should be very quick, especially with the relationship that we have with the state of North Carolina. We've, we've been very successful, you know, with the state helping us out and some of this stuff. They understand too, the issues that we can have.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Yes, thank you and all the staff for all your hard work with this budget. Again, I love the way that it looked. It was very smooth and easy. I love the fact how we decided to do these budget meetings so that we're ahead of the game. Um, so I would definitely be, I'm moving as a supporter of this budget.
Okay, motion on the side.
Thank you, motion. So we adopt the budget ordinance for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Second.
Motion and second is there a discussion? Scene number seven, roll call, start with Alderman Oden.
Alderman Oden?
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bagel?
Yes.
Motion carries item number fifteen.
Mayor, the next item is to consider adopting a resolution approving a consulting agreement with Old North Strategies at the May eleventh meeting. The official is made directed staff to initiate a contract with this firm. As a result, the group consultant and legislative advocacy services were proposed at a top of twelve thousand five hundred dollars per month for a period beginning May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first.
Mayor, I think everyone here had the opportunity to meet with this group and I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a consulting agreement with Old North Strategies.
Second.
Motion and second is there a discussion? Questions made called. Is there a motion in the order this time?
Yeah, questions being made. Oh, to make.
Did anybody make a motion?
And the second by Alderman.
Motion and second. Uh, any other discussions? Scene number seven, let's go to, uh, roll call by Alderman Bagel.
Alderman Bagel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries item number seventeen.
Mayor, the next item is to consider adopting an amendment to chapter fifty-four of the Code of Ordinance with respect to employees serving on an interim basis. The revision will prevent any supervisory authority or influence over immediate family member who is an employee. A memo from Ms. Hayes is attached. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board have questions?
Any questions, Mayor? I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance amended chapter fifty-four entitled Personnel.
Motion and second is there a discussion? Scene number seven, roll call, start with Alderman Oden.
Alderman Oden?
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bagel?
Yes.
Motion carries item number eighteen.
Mayor, the next item is to consider adopting a resolution approving the change in the police department's standard operating procedures. The department is interested in changing the procedures as it relates to display of tattoos while in uniform. And Police Chief is here. He's happy to answer any questions you may have.
Chief, would you like to come forward?
Hello. What's your proposal, Chief? Oh, I'm sorry. So currently, the New Bern Police Department policy restricts visible tattoos. This policy has been in place for quite a number of years. It is a policy that requires our officers in the summertime to wear long sleeve shirts or covering. Although this does, um, reflect a uniform practice and does not expose tattoos to the public, I believe it is a health issue. It is a morale issue. It affects our retention and our recruiting ability. I come from an agency that has struggled with this, um, issue with respect to, um, exposing tattoos. And for the past fifteen years of my previous agency, uh, we wrote a policy similar to the one that I'm offering tonight. Um, that was proportional, reasonable, um, and it met the standards of the community. Um, I believe that change in the policy is in the best interest of the department. It's in the best interest of the officers. It is in the best interest of our community. Um, and I believe that, uh, any, um, issues that come up that may be considered with respect to offensive, um, tattoos can be easily addressed, um, as is stated in the policy. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So Chief, that uniform that you're wearing, is that polyester?
Yes, it is.
I thought that is hot or something like that.
It's very hot, yes, it is.
I can imagine. And then with all the other gear that you have to wear along with it.
Yes.
And so, I, I have a question. I know, does the military allow tattoos?
The military does allow certain tattoos. The, the policy offered tonight, um, is very similar to the policy of the United States Marine Corps. Um, I, I will also point out that New Bern is unique with respect to its tattoo policies. We have pulled, um, other agencies in our region, all of which have allowed their officers, um, to have visible tattoos and wear a uniform very similar to my own, uh, with, with respect to tattoos. And I can also say this, in twenty twenty-one, tattoos is not, uh, does not have the same, um, social, uh, opinions. Uh, people are wearing tattoos, um, women, men, young, old. It does not offend maybe like it did in previous generations.
I have a question. Um, who determines what tattoo is considered offensive?
That is a very subjective term. Uh, I think we can all agree that swastika is clearly out of bounds. So there are, um, tattoos that would be profanity. Uh, nudity, uh, would be out of bounds and that is particularly not policy. If there is a question as to whether or not a tattoo is, uh, offensive, uh, we have mechanisms in place to render whether or not that is in fact, uh, a violation and would have to be covered.
Okay. And then, um, is there, um, if, um, the police interact with a citizen and they have a concern or feel that they want to voice their opinion about how the tattoos or the location of the tattoos, are they going to, how does that weigh for the police officer? Obviously, all voices of residents are important. Is there, um, a process in regards to them filing a complaint because they feel that they don't like a tattoo or it's placed in inappropriate area that they've seen? Um, just asking these questions.
Yes, that's a very, a very good question. So the process would be like this. If a citizen felt as if a, a visible tattoo was offensive, they would file their complaint with our internal affairs division. Um, that would then initiate two, I think, one, an internal, um, investigation. And second, we would impanel, um, a, a group of police officers and citizens, uh, to review the tattoo. Um, the city attorney would also, uh, be represented on that board and, um, and the opinion would be rendered to the chief of police as to whether or not it was inside or outside policy.
Well, I just want to add my comment of I think that it is awesome that you brought this initiative in regards to tattoos. As you can see, I'm a big supporter of tattoos and I think, um, the main point for me and the reason why I would vote is because it's important that we have police officers that are in the community that are relatable. And there's a lot of people that, you know, recognize tattoos and support that. And I feel that is another step towards making community policing the best way that we do in New Bern, carrying that on. So I'm definitely in support of this and I thank you for that initiative. Thank you for going to the board.
Okay, um, Chief, question for you. Um, I've talked to some of your staff and they all seem to be supportive of this. My question for you, I'll put you on the spot here. Um, you won the big jobs that you got. That's why you ask me these tough questions. What, what you're feeling on tattoos and opening this up and, you know, things have changed. Explain to them, not a military guy, fully support the military. Um, it may have some ties here, but what's the deal with beards and facial hair not being allowed in the police department?
So, um, the previous chief, chief, I was told that there were two issues relating to, um, the staff that they wanted the new chief to address very early. The first one obviously is tattoos. The second one is facial hair. Um, I am not a supporter of allowing our officers to have facial hair for the following reasons. One, um, I do not believe that it allows.
Careful now, careful.
Does not allow our officers to dog, um, the necessary breathing apparatus that they would need. Um, there, it is also more difficult to regulate. Um, what I've found, um, in other areas is not all facial hair is the same. Some officers choose to just have the beard, no mustache. They would have a mustache that went all the way down. It would be a goatee. There are a number of variations that I have seen and it is more difficult to have a uniform policy with respect to yours.
Good answer. I was, I promised I would ask. I feel, I think.
I think the big issue really is in police and fire services, an ocean issue with facial hair and respirators. And it's, you can't, you can't have a fit test with facial hair. So that's been the, the issue for years and years now.
Safety.
Well, safety. Mr. Mayor, if there's no other questions, then I would make a motion that we approve the change in the police department's standing operating procedures as cited by our chief. Motion and second is there a discussion? Uh, have roll call, start with Alderman Oden.
Alderman Oden?
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bagel?
Yes.
Motion carries, next time.
Mayor, the next item is to consider adopting an ordinance to establish the other post employment benefits fund. The state treasurer's office requires that each municipality attempt to fund their other post employment benefits liability. In the future, the state will consider the efforts of each municipality in this regard when they are approving applications for debt. It's recommended that one hundred thousand dollars be used to establish the fund and that entropy made to add additional funding each year. A memo from Ms. Hogan is attached and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board have questions?
Yes, um, Mary, I have a question on this, please. So this, so the post employment benefits, is that strictly applies to retirees with thirty years? Or not, just thirty years, correct? Or not, just thirty years, correct?
I think we have some that are eligible for a fifty percent, right?
Twenty-five years?
It says, it strictly applies to health insurance, that we provide health insurance to our employees if they have retired. Some is at fifty percent, some is at a hundred percent.
Well, sir, Mary, do you know where our current exposure is today, what the dollar amount is?
Yeah, so it's over thirty million, is, is, but I think statewide, I would not be the only finance director who would say that the calculations are a little bit off base. They include every single employee and including, and assume that every single employee is going to work here for thirty years and every single employee is going to be eligible, including people like me, and I'll be dead in thirty years, but I'm there, I'm still in that calculation. So, I, I think that that's kind of why they backed off of fully funding it. It would actually bankrupt many cities in our interstate if they tried to fully fund it. So the, the state treasurer, the, the kind of the tone at the last conference when he spoke about this again, and he's been talking about it for seven years now, was basically that we need to make an attempt to fund this. That's why it's worded that way. So I propose really we just establish a fund and put some money into it, a hundred thousand dollars. It's just a number, we don't need to necessarily recommend that amount. If we wanted to put a much lower amount in, I'm fine with that. Uh, just think at the end of each year, once again in June, when we're kind of shoring up our books, we're going to try to make a commitment in each year, putting something in it so that it, it is there, that the, that we've, at least made a good faith effort to follow the rules. I will also say that currently our retirees who are receiving this benefit, those expenses for their retirement are in our current budget. We budget and pay as we go, which, so do ninety-five percent of the other cities in the state. This is really just a, a safety net in case sometime in the future we can't afford to do that. We've got this money there to, to honor our commitments. I would also say that part of the other thing was this going on with this initiative from the state treasurer's office, they're really trying to convince local governments to stop offering this benefit. The state, and I just, my husband just heard from NC State that they will no longer be, if you're hiring, I can do a lot of that. Then it's one way for all the university state employees, I don't know about the whole state, but. So they're, they're, you know, they're starting to hunt the trees like, you know, like we're private citizens instead of public.
What's the restrictions on this account? So if we put, if we end up five years down the road, and we, you know, with two million dollars in it, and we have a hurricane, and we need to dip into it, is that possible?
This particular account, there's no restrictions, it's just going to be a fund on our books. They're highly recommending that we put it into an official trust, and they have, they have the trust ready for us. They, you know, we have to just call them, sign up, send them our money. And I would recommend that in a few years down the road. I think we need to get it established, and we kind of need to get a good policy in place, and start figuring out what our true, I think what our true risk is and our true liability is down the road, and try to make some honest sense of it. I just want to get something on, get a fund established and put something in, it going, and then we'll work on what it should be, I think, as we move forward.
My last comment, or question, maybe the company that does our salary study, is this something that they could add on to what they're doing to give us a more realistic number?
Yeah, I think there are the evolving process. I mean, that's where we got the thirty million dollars, I think, so, yeah. But I can, I'll call them and see if we can discuss some of the data that we're sending them, and look at, hey, I think looking at birth dates, and looking at tenure, I think all those kinds of things are important when we look at this number. And then I do think eventually we probably should do a, a, a bone trust, and then attorney can sort of, you know, let's do that, get that set up, and, and, and kind of get, so, and at that point, you would have, it would be very restricted. You could not spend it. Once a year when we get our budget for, for this particular expense, if we get, put money in or take money out, it's needed, we can shore it up once a year.
So, so Mary, you're saying that, so right now, we're currently, in our budget, we have the funding for this particular benefit, and it's just based on, not every employee, but only on the employees-
Who are receiving it. So if you're retired from the city and you're eligible, that we have, then you're on our health insurance plan, and we're paying your premiums for you. And it's just part of our current budget when we look at our health insurance expense. No other questions, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt an ordinance to establish the other post employment benefits fund.
Motion and second is our discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Donovan Dingle.
Donovan Dingle, yes. Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Donovan Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Donovan Best?
Yes.
Donovan Oden?
Yes. Motion carries, I number nineteen.
Mayor, the next item is to consider adopting a resolution accepting the American Rescue Plan funding in the amount of six million, seven hundred four thousand, three hundred fifty-one dollars. None of from Ms. Hogan is attached.
May I ask, no, no, no questions about this money. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to do a resolution accepting the American Rescue Plan funding. Would you have a twenty with it as well, yes, right there?
Yes.
And an ordinance to establish the American Rescue Plan fund.
Second.
Motion and second is our discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Donovan Oden.
Donovan Oden?
Yes.
Donovan Best?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Donovan Astor?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Donovan Dingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, I number twenty-one.
May I ask a quick question about that? When can we expect to get an executive summary of what that funding meeting will be for?
We're going to be talking about that in the city manager's report.
And also establish the date that we can have this meeting, yes, please.
Well, you're talking about me, okay, yeah, I'm, I'm talking about the American Rescue.
Mayor, the next item is to consider adopting an ordinance to establish the twenty twenty-one electric system capacity improvement project fund. The city's electric system is at full capacity to improve load conditions. So the director of public utilities advises the staff as studied the matter in great depth with the help of outside consultants, and has developed a path plan to increase the system capacity. The plan is expected to cover a twenty-year growth forecast on the cost of an estimated ten million dollars. While the project will be financed, preliminary expenses such as engineering, design, land acquisition, et cetera, are estimated at five hundred thousand dollars. Thus, it's requested a project fund be created. Mr. Schor is happy to answer any questions you may have on this.
Board have any questions?
Thank you ahead. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance to establish the twenty twenty-one electric system capacity improvement project fund.
Second.
Can we do twenty-two?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and a resolution approving the declaration of intent to reimburse for the twenty twenty-one electric system capacity improvement project.
Second.
Motion and second is our discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Donovan Dingle.
Donovan Dingle?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Donovan Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw? Donovan Best?
Yes.
Donovan Oden?
Yes. Okay, motion carries, skip to appointments, starting with Donovan Dingle.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to reappoint Corinne Thor to the Community Development Advisory Committee.
Second.
Motion second, all favor, motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same, motion carries. Anything else, or Donovan Harris?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to re-appoint Ms. Carol Williams to the Community Development Advisory Committee.
Second. Motion and second, need a discussion, seeing none, all favor the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same. Motion carries, anything else? Okay, Donovan Astor.
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion that we, or I'd like to appoint Marshall Williams to the Community Development Advisory Committee.
That's a reappointment.
Second.
Motion and second is our discussion. Seeing none, all favor the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Anything else?
Yes.
Donovan Best? Donovan Oden?
Yes, sir, Mayor, I'd like to also reappoint someone to the Community Development Advisory Committee, if you'd just, Lindsay, yes.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, all favor the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same, motion carries. Attorney's report?
The report, my mayor.
City manager's report?
Mayor, city hall renovations are progressing along. However, the facility may not be ready by the next meeting, so a motion would be needed to hold the June eighth meeting here at the West New Bern Recreation Center.
Second.
Um, honey, is there a way that we can just go ahead and just do it for the month of June so we don't need to keep coming back? I mean, the facility, right, if anyone has a problem, I mean, I think maybe, you think by the end of June, by the meeting in July, we should be good to go?
We certainly, that's a-
I just think maybe-
I was up, I was up there today, and it's, they were laying carpet. Um, I know the, the air, uh, mayor wants to do air quality up there, and they've got to put the furniture back, so, you know, it's going to be at least two to three weeks.
Okay, I mean, I, I would like to, you know, make a motion that we go ahead and schedule both of our new meetings here at the West, uh, New Bern Rec Center, if the rest of my colleagues agree.
Yeah, I'll second that question. If we see that we can get in, it doesn't matter, we're covered.
On June eighth, you can change this.
Okay. If we see that, yes.
Okay, discussion. All favor the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries.
Next item is to see if there's any interest in rescheduling the bond meeting that was previously scheduled to be held approximately a month ago, and as part of that meeting to discuss the American Rescue Plan, to give everyone an idea of what can actually be, those funds can be spent.
Yes. I mean, we want to do, we want to go ahead and pick a day, or is it possible we can do it after September? Or whatever it is, or I think I'll just send a regular board meeting. What's that, do we want to do it on May, or on the-
About June?
Oh, May's over. You know, we could do it in between the eighth and the, um-
About the June fifteenth, is that too far out?
That's Tuesday, the fifteenth, that would be the in-between meeting.
Yeah, you want to do that last Tuesday, no?
That's three weeks from tonight. Do we, is there any reason, Mary, we need it sooner than that? No?
I say, okay, it was June fifteenth, um, at six o'clock at City Hall, uh, West New Bern Rec Center, um, for the meeting in regards to, um, the American Rescue Fund, um, information, and also the bond, getting information about, um, the bond.
Motion.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Motion and second, do we have discussion? Seeing none, all favor the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Um, can you, in the, the budget, there was a hundred thousand dollars in there, or a hundred, oh, it's under the direct, direct department for acquisition out of, Martin Marietta, what's that? Do you remember that?
No, I don't.
Well, don't worry about it, I'll, I'll ask you about that later.
Okay.
Um, nothing else under city manager's report. Uh, New Business, Donovan Oden?
None tonight, sir.
Oh, okay.
None.
Donovan Astor?
None tonight, sir.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes, thank you, Mary. I just wanted to, um, recognize and thank, um, the Greater Duffy Field Residence Council for their letters in regards to, um, the cleanup, um, you know, the city partnered with them for Perbrook and doing the cleanup. I think that's amazing. And then we all received this letter in regards to possibly, when we get to that point of Stanley White and Happy Buildings, that the Duffy Field, uh, Greater Duffy Field Residence Council, um, you know, that's where their meeting started, Stanley White is very important to them, as it is the entire city, that if it isn't the best interest or in the thought process of the board, um, they would love to have a room, the office where they would be that, be dedicated to, um, the Greater Duffy Field Residence Council and have, you know, their memorabilia and things in the history of, um, you know, where it started, Dub Fest and things of that nature. So, you know, just, here is the letter, and when we get to that point, I would love to have that as a discussion, because that is something that is going to help mend, um, you know, Stanley White and, and, you know, the tragedy of the hurricanes for the community, so, that's all I have.
Donovan Harris, I thought that that's not covered in the Stanley White Advisory Committee meetings?
Um, well, we haven't had a meeting, um, recently yet, but, um, they addressed the board because at the end of the day, ultimately, um, the board will make a decision on things that are-
Of course, but I think it would be helpful to have that recommendation come from that committee, since, you know, to us.
Absolutely, and I'll let Ms. Carol know, the Greater Duffy Field Residence Council as well, to make sure that they reach out to Stanley White Advisory Committee in regards to that possibility of naming a, a room, you know, after, and that's all I have to do.
Okay. Uh, under New Business, uh, Mr. Charles, could you come up?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one more thing.
You said Jim, and I-
So, yeah, he's already one thing, I just wanted to say, I had an amazing experience today with Colleen, um, doing an interview for, uh, this week at City Hall. Um, I've been here for almost four years and never really utilized that service, um, and I think it's underutilized by the board, and I think that we should definitely, um, make the effort to do things. It was really exciting, and I just appreciate all the hard work that you do with making us look good, um, and, and making sure all that communication gets out there. So look for us, uh, me and, uh, Ms. Selena Massey in regards to all the G T celebrations on C T V three. Yes, and YouTube, come in there soon. So thank you again, I really appreciate that comment.
You're welcome.
I promise I'm done now.
Okay. Donovan Dingle, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm so excited about asking about the elevators.
Okay, so let's go ahead and give us an update on the elevator, because there are a lot of people. You know, as a matter of fact, I have to say this, I had a great reunion on Sunday with, um, former city clerk, uh, Annette West, and former city clerk, Vicki Johnson, and collector of taxes, Bertie Joyner, I had dinner with them on Sunday evening, and thoroughly, thoroughly enjoyed myself, and we just shared lots of good stories about City Hall and their time there. And I invited them, I said, you know, we're redoing the courtroom, and you need to come up there, and both Ms. Joyner and Ms. West said, well, I really can't get up the stairs, because with no elevator, I'm, I'm really not able to climb up the stairs. And Ms. Joyner's almost ninety years old, and so, you know, that really touched my heart. And I think about how Ms. Sampson, God bless her, that she climbs those stairs. That is so important that we get this elevator. This is just, and I can't leave City Hall without getting that elevator, so please tell us what's going on, or do we know?
So Mr. Charles and I had a conversation about this earlier today, and I'm asking him to come up and make some board on this.
Um, M B F Architecture, you know, is working on the schematic roads now, which are just the renderings, and are slowly getting into the construction and all that things. But they're also doing their typical reviews with H P C, going over where they stand for their full presentation. So according to their schedule, between now and nine months out, so we should be in the stage of selecting contractors. So that, that is happening, and, and if that schedule, if that schedule is adjusted, I will send out a new schedule to everybody's H P C, and I'll talk to you in the morning, that's sure.
So we're in the process of going to bid?
No, 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 we're still, we're still on the construction, we're on phases.
Okay, so you said, I thought-
In nine months, in nine months.
I thought that they were on a fast track the last time we talked, with that H P C, have they slowed down again?
No, I don't believe so, but I can, I can check.
You're like the fire.
I'll, I'll form an updated schedule to everybody, so that we're accurate.
Yeah, it's like, it's like the fire. We'd like to, you know, it's been, what, two years now? We've been messing with it? Okay.
And thanks for running the courthouse now, so.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, we didn't see that at all done at once while we were out, and moved out. Moved it out again.
Um, I do have a couple of things, um, uh, Mr. Hughes, um, I think we need to address the, um, the days-in parking lot, or the, the days-in property. You know, we had a really successful weekend with Tap That, Freshwater Brewery, brewery ninety-nine. I mean, it was amazing to see people out and join themselves. But, uh, we still have the liability of that parking lot, because the city owns it, often when somebody gets hurt, it's not lit. There's lots of issues on there. Um, I would like to maybe either the board bring it up as a topic, whatever. I know the front part of it, now, I'm talking the backside where it's all level. The front side, I'd like to see it roped off, really, so that people can't get on there and get hurt, or their cars, or hurt themselves. And then maybe the back parking, we can talk about leasing the spaces or doing something like that to the businesses around that are using it right now, you know, just using it. I, I just feel, we have liability, and I'd like to, if anybody has any thoughts about that, but we need to protect ourselves as a city, in case somebody gets hurt, their cars are damaged, whatever happens in that parking lot, when people are parking there, going to the facilities, I think we need to have some conversations.
Yeah, I think, short term, obviously, we, we should address it, but, um, I think I've told somebody to just-
Yeah, I think short term, obviously, we should address it, but I think I've told somebody this story. The first closed session that I went into about eight years ago was in City Hall. It was another board that were talking about, we've gotta get a hold of this building, we gotta get a hold of this property. And I made a comment, well, what are we gonna do with it? And I got these looks back, well, I don't know, but we've gotta get it because we can't let somebody else have control of this. Well, we've had control over this for several years now. I guess just from a development services standpoint, are we doing anything to market this property? Is it listed anywhere or are we just waiting for some sort of direction or vision?
It's, it's not marketed or listed or anything like that. We have had conversations with developers, with the board members. You gave the redevelopment commission, the task of vetting development proposals and working through that. So we've come to working with two developers right now. So I've had multiple meetings with them to try to, you know, try to get the vision of this board into, you know, into their project scope and mesh those two together before we brought something back to you all. But that's, it's not marketed or anything.
So if anyone is interested in doing something there, do they reach out to your department?
Sure, absolutely, or, or anyone of you. Some of them have sent, people who have, developers who have tons of them with questions to me directly to discuss vehicles and things like that, so sure.
Oh, I have a question for Scott. Is there any way for us to release any type of responsibility if anyone gets hurt on that property or anything like that?
Not unless they sign a waiver.
Okay, so is it possible in our ability to create a waiver in regards to that? If people are gonna use it to park? Because my only thought process is that when there's community events, that is perfect spot for people to be able to park and walk over close, especially the Juneteenth celebration after it comes off.
Yeah, that would be a different situation because they're in the city, they would have the insurance, whatever. I'm talking what's happening is the businesses along, are using it as their parking lot on a daily basis.
Okay.
That's what I'm talking about, not for specific events. We understand that we use that. For special events, I'm talking about the day-to-day use of that back parking lot. I would rather say we lease it or, you know, so we release ourselves from the liability of somebody's business using it day-to-day.
Right, I understand. My, my only thing is these are new businesses that popped up, you know, and we're all struggling in regards to keeping our businesses afloat as a parking lot has been there. I just think this allows, you know, a, a less of a headache for people to be able to patronize these businesses and, and stuff. So, I mean, I would be in favor of, of trying to lease these things. I mean, we have these public-private partnerships and it's a, it's crowded right now. We have a department that's gonna be working on presenting something to the board.
This is the backside that's not crowded.
I understand.
And, and that would be a public-private partnership. The private side of the public.
But it's charged for.
We do that to mortgage, mortgage payments.
That's, that's in downtown.
I understand, but I'm saying they don't have parking, they need parking, they pay for it. You know, understood it's a cost of doing a business. I'm not saying, I just think, I'm concerned about somebody getting hurt late at night. It's very dark there because there's no lights. God forbid someone, a woman got raped or got assaulted or anything like that. We would be liable, it's on our property. That's the only thing I'm concerned about. What is the, the optics of that? How do we protect ourselves and protect the public? I mean, it's not currently lit. Just wanna make sure. So anyway, it's out there for discussion. I would like for us to have more discussion on that and I ask them for, you know, the resolutions tonight, but.
I just think the property needs to be marketed, so is pretty positive.
Yeah, I, I would be on that, I'd much rather see that. And, you know, if that happened, if somebody marketed and developed it, the parking's gonna go away anyway. Um, because then.
But it's currently, but it's currently under the redevelopment commission.
Correct.
No.
Yeah. No, it didn't, it did not go under, then we were trying to get it under the redevelopment commission at one point.
Well, I mean, we said we, they have to bring back the vision to us. We know the current. Right. Um, the other thing is, I would like, Mr. Hughes, at our next meeting to have agenda item talking about, and I, Mr. Jerry, we need to get a letter from the redevelopment commission requesting the property that we're going to move to, that's over there that we bought on Broad Street, that property. We need to have a formal request.
The Gaston House.
The Gaston House, I'm sorry. Not the Gaston House, behind the Gaston House.
Six eleven Gas. Behind the Black Swan.
Yeah.
Or Gaston Boulevard.
Wait, I don't know if the address is.
Six eleven Gas. Oh, okay.
Okay, so we need, we would need to have that to, to give that to you to move it, so it means.
Okay, I have the impression it was.
I thought we already handled that at the board meeting.
I don't know, I was told, I was asked, that's okay.
We just, it's just, I think it's a technical thing.
Yeah.
It's just a technical thing. So if we need, we need to do that, then we also need to have some discussion about the movement of the Black Swan House and the Pete and Mickey's building, how we'd wanna handle that. I believe that people are calling asking about, you know, if they moved it, can they either buy it or, you know, pay for the movement and whatever, we need to talk about that.
This is the land that was purchased.
Correct, correct, and the buildings that are currently on there, how we dispose of that.
Instead of demolishing it.
Correct.
Buy it and move it.
Correct. Or we move it and sell it, or they move it and we don't pay for it, whatever. There's, there's, there's probably option A, B, and C. So I would like to bring that to the next meeting and get it on the agenda if possible.
Mr. Davis, I think, did we receive an offer for the restaurant?
Yes, sir, we did.
So can, can that just be put on our next agenda for us to offer to start up that new process?
No, sir, that, that's an offer not to buy the land, but to buy the personal property. Personal property surplus like vehicles or equipment, a building not attached to land becomes personal property. And the process, if we're wanting to do that, is to have an auction, a sealed bid auction, and the structure would go to the highest bidder. Or the city could have staff prepare a scope of work to demolish or remove the building from the property and then the city would entertain the best offer to move the building.
So I'm just trying to avoid the elevator again where we're two years down the road talking about it. Can, when, instead of us putting on our next agenda, have a discussion, can staff have those options all ready? Ready for us, we can make a decision?
That's unimaginable. So staff can walk away in two weeks knowing what to do. Yes, sir.
So if, if we are moving to that meeting, that's fine. That's it, thank you, Mayor.
So of the directs, what kind of directions you want from the board as to which flavor of them?
What, what I thought I would do is work with city manager and staff to put together options for the restructures that are located on those parcels for the boards to consider and take action on.
Well, I mean, all three of them are totally different dynamics, so.
Yes, sir.
So, why, why is not individually?
We will. Each will, each structure will have options. We already have an option for the brick structure, where they might just like it and they already have a lot to relocate it. That one's easy. Black Swan, a little more challenging. Pete and Mickey's has a couple, the Ginsamchop has a couple options as well. So for the, do you, your various options and the board beside, what are those flavors you like?
So if the board.
Oh, I do have a question. If based on those properties, because, you know, that property was purchased in hopes that Stanley White would be put there, if anything is sold, is that money gonna go towards Stanley White? Or will it go with that?
I don't think you're gonna make any money. It's probably gonna be a cost, would be my guess.
Yes, sir. It'll be expensive.
Wow, okay.
It'll actually save us some demolition costs.
So much stuff having to take and demolish.
And tipping these out of it all. And we probably need to move on this pretty quick because this Stanley White's coming out of council's office June seventh and then it goes to public comment period. Three days and then it's over with theoretically.
And we still have to make an efficient goal for the rest of the month to go, so.
Okay, so you'll have that for us at the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else coming forward the board? Is it time that we need to close session tonight? Mayor?
Mayor, I forgot and I apologize. I was out of town on Thursday, but it was a pretty large announcement took place that would be transformational for the city with the acquisition of Patter Shops, of Bass Pro Shops, where we grew the nose at. There's a lot of rumors, as you can imagine, swirling that there's a Bass Pro Shop building in Old Harris Teager Building. None, none of that stuff is true. If you want to know the facts, then ask somebody that's involved with that situation. I know there's a lot of excitement, but the fact that incremental jobs is being added there, I think around $49,000 annual salary, over $30 million worth of investment in the facility there, which that's a taxable structure. So I don't know what it's worth right now, but if you take the delta of that and you figure it out, we probably covered our gap to fill those positions that we just had in the budget. So there's different things, but that's how you grow your city is by growing your tax base, not growing your tax rate. And this is an ideal situation as it adds support all the way from the state all the way down to the local level. So kudos to everybody who played a part in that. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there, but it was definitely a great day from what I heard.
It was. That's right, Alderman Des was there, myself, the mayor, and Morgan Kinsey was there. And I was just blown away by how wonderfully they treated the employees. This was about the employees, this wasn't about us as being the local dignitaries. You know, the, the employees were led down the red carpet, we cheered for them and that it's gonna be a new day for them and the plant won't be closed, the jobs can save, and it was just a wonderful event. And I wanna thank Mr. John Morris, who is the owner of Bass Pro Shops, who is investing his money in our city and the kind of things he said about the city of Newbury. Just really pleased and it was a great event and I look forward to him investing in this community in more ways than one.
Anything else coming forward, even board involvement at this time?
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn, need a discussion. C and N, all favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. The motion carries, we are adjourned.